The time is about four minutes after six. We'd like to start this meeting with the prayer. Councilman Welton will say the prayer.
Father in heaven, as we come before you this evening, we're thankful to be able to gather here as residents of this great town. We're thankful to be able to meet freely and to openly discuss the issues facing the city and try to find solutions that would make this a better place to live, a place that we can raise our families in safety. We pray, Father, that thy Spirit will be with us and guide us in our decisions. We pray, Father, for our country, that the leaders at a larger level will also be blessed, that they will be able to work through issues in a civil manner and to come to the best decisions. And we say these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ.
Amen. Moving on, Isaac Gilmer has agreed to lead us in the pledge. You come up, Isaac, and lead us.
Will the audience please rise? Please repeat the pledge of allegiance after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, where we are a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The aunts may now be seated.
Thank you, Isaac. Moving on with our meeting, we'd like to go to C, the consent agenda. One, approval of minutes for the regular meeting of January 3rd, 2018.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That moves on to D, petitions and communication. Open the public forum. If we have anybody that would like to come up and speak to us, so come on up to the microphone if you would and state your name. We'll try and limit you to right around three minutes if you can, please.
Three minutes is a long time for me tonight.
Oh, okay.
Basically, I'm here, my name is Ron Tripoli, I live at 1106 South 680 West here in Basin, and we've lived there for 16 years. Over the course of the last 16 years, we haven't had any problems on that quarter pretty much, except for the road. The road's very, very poorly taken care of, it's been tore out, put back, tore out, put back so many times. Our corner's full of weeds, I keep taking care of that, the city has not come out and done anything about it recently. The trash is not getting picked up on time, the street's being neglected even more, and last year was in a very bad wreck because the city streets were miserably full of snow. Last year was a real bad year, obviously. But I'm talking this much snow all the way up our street. I've got photos of it, I've got photos of the wreck, I've got photos of the truck that comes up the street, goes up here, goes around and leaves, and leaves everything up our street completely full of snow. I got a wreck, I went to the hospital, I've got $8,000 in bills because of this, okay? Not good. Somebody needs to do something about this, and I penned a letter to the mayor, which I have right here. I sent it both to, let's see, Mr. Rick Moore, Mayor, the head of Payson City Corporation, Payson City Managers, and Superintendent Responsible for Maintaining All of Our Roads. No response whatsoever.
One more time for me.
Your address again, yeah?
1106, 1106 South, 680 West. We are number three on the city map, which shows what areas get cleared to the city first. Now, this goes all the way up to, what, 7, 8, 9? We're on three, we never got cleared. I pull out my driveway, I'm three-quarter down the road, that's it. My fault. I was speeding, is the ticket I paid the city of Payson $150 for. Not right.
Certainly we'll take a look at that.
The other issue is the responsibility of the city to inform people about the trash that's going on. I've got all kinds of stuff, I could sit here a lot more than three minutes, but recycling, price just went up, we were told we could get out of it in October, but then we get a notice in December that the price goes up. We can't get out of it now. I don't have a contract with this recycling company, the city does. The people that aren't taking care of their own trash, that's on you, you know, that's on them. But, you know, me and my wife, two people, we've got this much trash after a month, so...
Okay, when did you send the letter to the mayor and city?
I had it dated, I don't know, let me see here. Let's see, this is dated 1/21/17 when it happened, I did this probably within two, three weeks.
So, is he part of your going?
Yep.
Did you email it, or did you send it by email?
No, I walked it into the city. Both of them. And I think I gave them trip, okay? It's all I have right now.
Thank you.
A little more than three minutes.
Anyone else? You'd like to please step up to the microphone? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public forum, we'd like to move on to number two, council and staff reports. Any staff would like to come up and report?
Just two quick items. On Monday, the 22nd, at 2:00, Payson will be hosting a regional meeting with UAMs on the New Scale, your power plant, and, it's at 2:00, I know that's kind of...
What day is that again?
Monday, it's Monday, it's 22nd. Right here. Right here, and so, if you could look at your schedule, just maybe shoot me an email or text or something, just to know how many people should be there, and it's moving ahead, we're getting close to power sales contracts, and this is one of the first meetings for information for you, and then we'll have one in the future in the next, in the next two months that we'll bring directly up.
How long did the meeting last?
It took me two hours, but they've cut down the presentation that they gave me, and it could be maybe only an hour. Kind of depends on how many questions come up. And then, just, I hope you all got on the legislative recession, reception, on February 20th, let me know if any of you would like to go to that, that's the new apps. It's at the Capitol, from 4:30 to 6:00, and I can probably see, and all that, that time of year is pretty busy, so, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Mayor and council, just wanted to give you a couple of quick updates on a couple of businesses that will be coming to Payson. IHOP will probably start next month on construction, from what they told us, and then KFC, Jill met with them yesterday, and they're looking at an April/May start, so, they are not as fast as we probably would have liked, but they are coming still, so, whatever rumors you heard that they're not, they are coming. Obviously, we still don't have much snow, so I won't waste your time giving you a snow update, there's not much up there, but hopefully we'll get some this weekend, we'll see. If you guys have any questions, it's just a quick, a couple updates.
Thanks, Travis.
Hey, council, just a couple of things, next Wednesday is the local official state legislature, I sent a couple of emails out, I know Councilman Welton has signed up, Mayor Wright signed up, he'll take in our youth city council. I know it's during the day, it's hard to get to, but if you, if you want to go, you need to let us know, I think, I got an email that it might be the last day today to register tomorrow. Linda, do you want to go?
I'll change my work.
We can get you registered if you want to do that.
Would you?
So, last year, Doug had to drive the bus.
Had to drive the big old van up the hill, uh, snow.
And it was scary.
Yeah, well, we will try to...
It was a little scary.
We'll have the transportation up there, I think there are three or four youth city council members going to attend. Representative Mark Roberts indicated he would have lunch with us, we might be able to meet with him during the morning and look at the legislative process. I haven't heard back from Senator Henderson, I reached out to her as well, but, yeah, if you'd like, I can get you registered, and we'll probably need to leave 6:00 Wednesday morning. We'll be down here, there's a reception, I think, from 7:00 to 8:00, so we'll be out there about 7:30, be fine, and then the youth city council has a debate, do some things like that. Although, all the youth city council that are registered, they are in, they're in, put in for drawing, they're going to draw two tickets to the musical Hamilton that's coming to Salt Lake in the summer as the governor's guest. So, those are nice gifts that two, two youth city council members will get through the drawing. So, yeah, that'll be a good thing. The other thing I just wanted to mention last council meeting, Mr. York indicated that we were in violation of the law for the, with our power rate. I did send to all of the council the response that we put back when he made that claim a couple of years ago. There was an email that Mayor Moore asked me to get something so he could forward that on, I'm not positive whether he forwarded that on, but I forwarded you the information. We also put that court case, Brigham City, the Brigham City case, on Facebook back when he made those claims on Facebook, for those that wanted to read the case. I just wanted to report to you that our position is, we're not violating the law, we're well within the law. I don't know if there's anything else the council wants us to do, staff, we could send this stuff to him. I think he got it from Mayor Moore, but I'm not positive, but we can forward him the case and the memo that we have drafted, but it was on Facebook so that any citizen could look that up and read the case for themselves, but if there's anything else you want us to do, we're happy to do that.
Well, and I talked to him about it as well, too, so to say that nobody's talked to him about it, it's probably not quite factual. And I did a little preliminary research myself, and his position is switching electric to property tax, and I did a little research on the nonprofits that pay electric, and it would actually end up raising rate, payers' rates by $50 a year if we did what we, what he is proposing. Unless you're willing to cut some services somewhere, then that's a different discussion.
I just wanted to report back, as it was reported in public, so...
Thanks, Dave. Any other staff? Okay, we'll move to council reports. Did we do some of the council?
Okay. Well, just an odd question, I'm noticing that the Payson flag is higher than the US flag, we should probably change that. I don't know if it's on a different step, I can't see from here.
It's supposed to be on the other side.
I will move it.
Okay. Other than that, I don't have a lot to go over right now, appreciate everybody, everybody's time and their work.
I don't have, I have nothing.
I don't have anything either.
Then we'll move on to number three, scout attendance certificates, we'll turn some time over to Councilwoman Carter.
Looks like we've got a couple of scouts that are here with us tonight, and we want you to come up when I call your name, and I'll give you this certificate, and I want you to stand right here, okay, for a minute. First, I have Isaac Gilmer. Here you go, Isaac, can I shake your hand? Okay, do you stand right here, your hands are cold. And Jacob Huber. Hi, Jacob. There you go, good job. Okay, what we normally do is we like to ask you boys what you like about scouting, and I want you to say it loud enough so everybody can hear. Okay, you go first.
I really like camping.
Camping's your favorite.
And all that door stuff.
Okay.
I really like learning new things and skills we can use later in life.
Good, great, well, thank you, you guys, I want you to come up and shake everybody's hand, all right?
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Give all of them a, give them a hand, would you? Okay, moving on, we'll go to E, action items. Number one, public hearing, vacation of subdivision and existing public utility easements for the Green Ridge Overlook subdivision located on the west side of 500 East, between 800 South and 976 South. There's also another one that we could probably consider at the same time, number two, a public carrying disposal of property to the west of Green Ridge Overlook subdivision located on the west side of 500 East, 800 South, and 1,000 South. So, we go ahead and entertain that.
Hey, Mayor, Council, just before you get to that item, one other thing is Rocky Mountain ATV has gotten back with us, and we're planning a tour of their facility, they've done some upgrades, it's a pretty cool facility, so, he is scheduled with us to go through that facility on February 28th. Oh, you're gone, Linda. February 28th at 4:00 PM, so if you want to put that on their calendar, he's happy to take us through a tour on that facility, it's pretty cool, so, we'll invite the council, probably some staff members, and go through this facility. When do you get back, Linda?
I need the 28th.
Oh, okay. Okay. So, Green Ridge Overlook, this one is fairly simple, but it represents, I think, a lot of work from these neighbors, it's been going on for a while now, and so I wanted to recognize that, neighbors have done a lot of work to get this done, it came from a petition from these neighbors to amend the plat, and as part of it, in conjunction with this, is disposing of some public properties, .52 acres, and we'll get to that as well. So, as you mentioned, where we're looking at, 800 South going along 500 East, so, these homes right here, and going down in this area right here, and then we have Hollow Park that's over here, and we're not changing Hollow Park, but these homes right here, with a gap right here. So, in terms of the zoning, we have R1 neighborhood, so, single-family homes, R1-9, so the lot size, the 9,000 square foot minimum up here, and 10,000 down here, but we're looking at R1-9, I mean, R1 neighborhood, single-family homes, and this project was originally built as a PRD, they're all single-family homes, and they were originally built on individual pads with HOA common space, and so, the setbacks, pretty typical setbacks with front and back and sides, but we were really looking at the pad, and then the area around it was not individually owned, so again, common space, and it's just kind of interesting with the layout right there, there's a big slope going into the park, and so because of that, this common space really isn't all that common, it's not that accessible, as you can see, I have some pictures on here, and so, this was planted back in 2005, home started around 2006, they've continued, most of them have been built, I think there might be one vacant lot left, and this year, the neighbors came in to amend this plat, to change it from pads to individual lots, so that they'd have privatized backyards, front yards, side yards, and a big part of that is, again, this wasn't really accessible common space, and a lot of people had started using the area behind their homes as their own personal backyard, nobody else was going back there anyway, so, you know, why not plant a garden, or start terracing, or doing something back there, so, that's the idea, is to accommodate what's been going on for this last decade. So, again, you can see the backup against the park, and there's individual pads with that common space, and not a lot of landscaping's really gone in, and we'll see some pictures of that, so, then, also, I guess it's good to mention, right here, so, it's not just common space, what happened was, the city came in and put up a fence, and that fence was the, well, what really became the border of Hollow Park, and that fence was not on the property line, and it seems like it wasn't really on the property line because of that odd terrain, so it slopes down, there's a bunch of trees and shrubs, and so rather than cut right through that on this deep slope, it was put more at the bottom of that slope, where it's easier to put a fence, easier to maintain for the city, rather than having to maintain this steep slope. So, the green portion right here represents the city-owned property, the rest of it on the other side of the green over here was the HOA property and then the individual path, so, this green area up here is .26 acres, and crazy enough, this area right here is also .26 acres, so together we're looking at .52 acres. So, under the code, that's considered to be insignificant, doesn't mean that land's important or nice to have, but it's insignificant for purposes of the process that we go through, so all that's required is it comes here to city council, and you need to deem that it's an appropriate use, and we're getting enough money for the land, and that's come to council before, I think some of the council members were here back in 2016 when this was discussed, and a price was agreed on, and it was agreed that the city would surplus this property to accommodate this change, and this change is necessary because without this property, without the land and the green, these lots would be too small. With the land and the green here, with that city property, they come out to about what you'd see in this, so, they're pretty equivalent, there's this giant lot down here, if you exclude that lot, the rest of these average just about 9,000 square foot, so, 9,000 square feet per lot, so you're looking at a lot that's consistent with that neighborhood, so that's, that's part of why that's being sold, and another part of it is, up to that fence line, neighbors have been using that property as if it were theirs, so, we're allowing them to continue to use what they had been using, and now we're just having them pay to purchase that land from us. So, here's current view, just some snapshots, so you can see the fence, again, rather than put the fence up on the city property line up here, it was put in a more conducive area, this is the walkway through Hollow Park, you can see, you know, neighbors using that land, using land here, you can see, it looks like maybe a garden up there, and that's what's gone on, and not on all of the lots, but on several of them. So, the proposed amended plat, you can see now how it's incorporated some of that city property that was in green, it's incorporated the HOA area, and changed all of that from those individual paths to these individual lots. Then, with that, there were a lot of things that needed to occur, and most of those have been done, the staff report went into some more detail, since that staff report was written, more items have been addressed. So, the three things that were mentioned in the staff report, one was an accessory apartment, so that came to light, they've gone through most, all of this, well, they've gone through the steps, very shortly that's going to be fully finalized, recorded, the county done. Utilities, there were a lot of things that needed to occur with utilities, and so I know a lot of these neighbors have been working diligently to get this done, and with the last thing was pressurized irrigation, and we're just about there. Another thing that came to light was, one of the owners had encroached more on city property than that original fence line, and so even after selling some of that city property, that retaining wall that was built would remain on city property, and so that retaining wall needed to be moved off of city property because the city didn't want to incur that liability and maintenance, so the retaining wall would be moved onto their side of the fence, or removed entirely, whatever that owner decides to do, and we've discussed with that owner, and it's been, it's been agreed that they would provide that and restore a city, that city wrought iron fence, which has been removed, and that should be taken care of. So, those were the outstanding items, and you can see here, the utility plan, all of it's been done to convert this from an HOA community where pressurized irrigation was done, you know, through a common area, and now they have the individualized meters, individualized utilities, and all of the easements, the public utility easements have been taken care of. So, today, with the decision from the city council, there's, there are two issues here, so there are two motions to make, one is the disposal of city property, again, so we're looking at under one acre, so, it's deemed as insignificant, and you just need to deem that this is an appropriate action to take, and that the city is receiving optimal value, so, the code requires that the council doesn't just give away land, that we receive optimal value for that land. The second motion is the amendment of the subdivision plat, and the standard here is neither the public nor any person will be materially injured by the proposed amendment, and there is good cause for such action, so that's the burden that needs to be met here, and that's for council to decide that these have been met. And then, as always, your options, you can approve, you can approve with additional conditions, you can remand it back to staff if you don't believe that everything that's needed to occur has occurred, you could also remand it back to staff if we need additional facts for you to know whether or not this proposal meets the ordinance requirements, and then, of course, you could deny the request if you don't believe that this meets code and those standards from the previous slide were not met. I'd also want to mention with approving the request, we wouldn't record, or we won't record the plat until everything is done, so those outstanding items are remaining. Staff does feel like they will be all resolved, but we're not going to record it, even if approved, until everything is resolved, so we won't just record it, even if it's, or if it's not resolved. So, that should cover the presentation, any questions?
I think, unless you have some questions right now, we'll hear a presentation from the, okay, go ahead.
On Lot 13, what, I can't remember the story on that.
Is that the bottom one down here?
This is the big one, right, right in the middle.
Oh.
Where there's no house.
Yeah, and that's, so that's not part of this plat, but...
So, that's not, that's just going to be out there by itself?
It's city-owned, it's separate lot.
Okay, so, the city owns that piece, and, okay, okay. And then, the other thing is, we talked about compensation, and I think we passed something a long time ago to get compensated a certain amount, so that's never been paid, or what's, where are we on the compensation of the land?
So, it's $11,000 per acre.
That's what we're approving today, isn't it? We approved that the year. I mean, that's what we're, that's what the first motion is.
So, with this holding, we would need to confirm, which has been discussed before.
Yeah, so it's $11,000 per acre. Yeah, so it's $11,000 per acre, we're looking at .52 acres. So whatever that comes out to be, 55, 55, whatever, whatever the calculator says.
Any other questions? I do have potential, well, I don't have a conflict, but I, this is my ward. It might come chase me down or else someone else might come chase me down, I don't know.
You might be asked to seek our forgiveness or.
Okay, is that it, Daniel?
That's it.
Okay, I see we have an applicant presentation, Richard Hatfield. Is Richard here?
I think that was just on there to give him the opportunity. I don't think he prepared anything in specific.
Okay, good. Okay, then I'll entertain motion to open a public hearing.
I'll make a motion, we open the public hearing for both the vacation of the subdivision and the disposal of public property.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Go ahead and open the public hearing. If anybody has something to say, step up to the mic and address this with her name and address.
Well, Spills, citizen of Payson, thank you for giving me an opportunity. It's probably just wanted clarification for my mind, but there's the property on the far south end, on the west side of the property, there's been an individual on that property so he could have access into that property so he could extend the garage down further and make a shop, more of a shop there. Are you going to let them have access off Canal Road into there? If so, might be a problem with easements coming off the Canal Road in aggressive address. And so we're, on the east side, holding bond there for the PI. There's used to be a road that went back and just below that is where you want to have an access road. I don't know whether that's part of this or not. I think if you open that up, you need to be a little careful. The other thing is, this park is one terrific park, except there's no place to park. And I think that maybe while you're looking at this, you may want to consider something for parking, whether it would be on the other side of Eighth South or whether it be in the park itself, take some property away from the park itself and put in some parking. But there's many people that like to use that park, utilize that park, but they don't have the parking to be able to get into it. And I think that ought to be addressed. When you sell property, you set the standard of what property's going for and 11,000 an acre? I want to buy property and pay some, I don't think you can find property for 11,000.
I'll find this strip that you can buy for that price. It's a strip of vertical.
I'll buy it and resell it too. Anyway, again, that's better than giving it away. I know that when we vacated property before we gave it away, it came back to sting us bad, in my opinion. So I think getting a little something, you're right, it is a long narrow piece and I was probably tongue in cheek, but those other two pieces, that larger piece is really a fairly good sized piece of property and it could be some outbuildings. Anyway, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Well, Bert, is one thing, Utah State did a study on this park for us. You might have been with Jill and about this last summer and made some suggestions on that park, so.
All good. Anyone else like, please come up. Comment on either one of the motions.
I need Stiffer Kelly, and I live at this house on the end. I don't know if you're referring to the extra piece of property, that property belongs, belongs to my husband and I, so that's not involved in the rest of what we're talking about. Am I off limits on that? Is my misunderstanding or what?
Use is at the bottom right.
Use is at the bottom left.
Right, the extra piece that people are saying that big lot, we own that.
Daniel, can you comment to that?
It's in lot 12, which one?
Lot 12, we own that, we pay taxes on the property.
We own the piece next door.
I was just going to make a matter of clarification, so Mr. Bills was commenting on some access to the lot on the south. He's actually referring to the Johnson piece, which is on the west side, the west side of the Hollow Park. So it's part of this overall development, but not part of the overlook yet. So Mr. Johnson's property is actually on the, on the west side is part of the Green Ridge landing development. And so yes, there has been some discussion about some access through the park to get to some of those properties, but it's not on property included here and so it would not be lot number 12 of the overlook.
Is that part of this proposal?
No, it is not.
You got it upside down and put it right on.
Is there any comment on what we've heard so far? Okay, move that we go ahead and close the public hearing. Have a motion for that. Okay, second?
Second.
A vote on it? Did we vote? Said aye?
Sorry.
Okay, fine. The public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion on the first item?
I think it's nice, just a couple comments. It's nice that we get this property like a squared away for the city and for the residents that live here. I think this is good for the park moving forward. And you know, like Daniel had stated, there's a lot of people who are using it as their backyard and I noticed that we have the same thing that's happening on the other side, which is a different discussion, but we've got a lot of fire pits on city property and gardens that we probably ought to address if we're being fair and equal to all of our residents at some future point. And this won't, this has nothing to do with the vote, but I'd like to talk, Mark, I'd like to talk about the fence sometime and putting, I'm not sure what the problem is putting a fence on top of the retaining wall. So, but that's, I don't think that has to do with this, but we'll talk about that.
So can we make this just one motion together or do we have to do two separate motions?
They were noted separately, so I suggest you do two motions.
Okay, first motion then is make a motion that we dispose of the city property that we deemed appropriate and that has optimal value for $11,000 per acre.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is this a roll call, vote, individual vote?
Yeah.
Okay, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The second item, we'd like to have some discussion on that.
I did have a question. So by absolving the HOA, does that absolve them from being a member of this HOA? Because they're no longer tied to HOA property. So that, where you're rezoning that, I don't, I don't understand the bylaws of their HOA. I haven't seen that. Does it?
We actually don't, we have not been functioning under an HOA for years. We dissolved that. We don't, we take care of our own property, we take care of, you know, the snow removal and the lawn care and everything. It's just in city name now, but we just need to have it dissolved.
If you're going to address this, please step up to the.
Don't apologize.
No, you're fine, you're fine. I'm a rookie here too, so if you're going to address this, please come up and, so we can hear better.
So for the record, you have dissolved the HOA and it is not functioning as an HOA as it stands now. So by dividing this up, you become lots, individual lots, but I noticed it's an R110, so it should be 10,000 square feet. Do we need to rezone that as an R19 in this process?
When they were built, they met all of the zoning requirements and so we were content. Grandfather, he's in, it's existing, single family homes, that they're all ready, existing in an R19 and R110 zone, even though they didn't quite meet that.
Kind of a gray area between the two zones? Okay, I'm okay with that.
Yes, they're just going to allow it to continue as is for not modifying, really have lands used or those structures in any way.
Okay, and so is there a timeline for, actually that was the last motion, sorry.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'm going to make a motion that we pass the amendment of subdivision of, wait, yeah, the amendment of subdivision of plat, the plat subdivision.
Is there a second?
Doug, could you add one thing to that?
Sure.
It's that they don't record the plat until all the action items are taken care of.
Okay, and I would amend that to say that we don't record the plats until all action items are satisfied by staff.
I'll second that.
Okay, are those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, with that done, we'll move on to the session.
Mayor Castle, I wanted to have some discussion with you regarding some development may happen up in, near Elk Ridge. So I think we've talked a little bit about this before, or I'm trying to get this up and running. We've been discussing with Elk Ridge City. There are lots around the golf course that are in the municipal limits of Payson City. We don't have a water system up there yet at this time. So we approached Elk Ridge, well, we've approached them a few times, but I drafted up a proposed interlocal agreement that would, that they would allow us to connect to their water system with some of homes that are built in Payson City until such time as we have water, a system built up there, a water tank and some water lines put down in there. They discussed that, over a period of time, I talked to a couple of individual council members. They indicated that as soon as they get their new well up and running, they didn't think that this was going to be a problem, that they were going to discuss it with their new And so with the changeover, we had tentatively said, I think I sent out the update, that they want to have a joint council meeting with Payson here in this building or this room, February 21st? Yeah, February 21st. But I wanted to give you a little update, just so you're aware of the issues and we can meet on that day and have further discussions. But so we had discussed this interlocal agreement and they, at least the ones I talked to, felt somewhat positive that we could come to some agreement so that we could have some development up around by the clubhouse that's on the Payson City side. And then a couple of, probably a month ago, they contacted me and indicated, Mr. Haskell, who you, he's been in here as well, is, was proposing to do another assisted living facility up next to the assisted living that they have in Elk Ridge. And they were somewhat concerned about that, the city was. And Mr. Haskell indicated that he would be willing to forego that assisted living facility, move it down on 1600 on the, on the Payson side if Payson City would be willing to let Elk Ridge annex a portion of that property that's in our growth boundary. And so Elk Ridge contacted and said, you know, maybe we can lump this all together if we can lock off a little bit of that property so that they could do that assisted living and a little bit of residential development. Then they seemed willing to allow us to connect to their system, maybe even permanently, the homes that are, would go in, in Payson City's municipal boundaries. So that's what we wanted to have a work session on. We can talk about it more at the work session. I just, you know, pull this up so you could, if I can figure this out.
Give them that.
Well, I pulled. Can't see it. Even with glasses, I can't see it. So this is the, this is the east side plan that Payson City Council adopted quite a few years ago. Well, right here's the, right, currently now there's a roundabout right there and that's 1600 that goes down from Elk Ridge. So this area is in our growth boundary. This is, this is the zoning that the, on the east side plan that the city approved. So what, what Mr. Haskell's proposing, that he would like to annex approximately 30 acres right here in this area. Part of this is his father's home and then there's, there'd be some limit, I think it's 30 something acres. But he would like to, the city, Payson City, to agree to have that annexed into Elk Ridge so they could develop, if he wanted to build, I think, two or three homes for his children and then also an assisted living facility down in this area. So that's what the work session will be that we have with the council and we can sit around the table and talk in more detail. But I just want to give you a heads up, you could be thinking about it. I can send you the draft interlocal agreement to connect to their water system so we can do some limited growth up, or have some growth up there around our golf course, so.
So the discussion is, we de-annex that into Elk Ridge and they let us use their water?
Well, yes, it's still in the county, so it's not in either city, but it's in our growth boundary. And it's kind of a little bit of an overlap area, but through previous agreements we have with Elk Ridge, we, both cities have agreed that this was the boundary, this will be Payson City on this side. And, but, you know, their position is Elk Ridge already developed this a little bit years ago with the Gossler subdivision and, you know, a little bit of this area, maybe even you'd have to lock this off, so you don't have a big peninsula there. Yeah, they would like to, if we'd be willing to let them develop a portion of that, then they would look at having us connect to their water system for some homes that would be in Payson City around the golf course. So that's kind of the long and the short of it, there's a lot of detail in between there. But I just wanted to introduce to you.
Do they want the assisted living care center? I thought, I thought Nelson was telling me, Councilman Abbott was telling me that they didn't want it.
Well, I don't think they want it up where they were. I think they.
They wanted, they just want to move it away from where they.
Yeah, the problem with Elk Ridge is council, what's that? Oh, I am? No, I don't want to do that. Thanks.
So Dave, if I understand right, that center section right here, just to the left of where you remarked, that's right there, that's currently in Elk Ridge.
That is in Elk Ridge City. That was developed 20 years ago or more?
It's longer than that.
Wasn't longer, that's been a long time ago, that subdivision was built. The homes along here on that Goose Nest Water Company, but, but yeah, the council adopted this east side plan, our council adopted that years ago. There's some buffer areas between, you know, between where there would be some housing and the all red orchards. We've talked about this before, the 300 acre rule and the all red orchards, keeping that into orchard. There are a lot of discussion that has taken place on this whole area, but this is the current proposal for Mr. Haskell. The Elk Ridge City Council, the problem of where the assisted living facility is in Mr. Haskell's property, it is zoned for an assisted living facility. He was moving forward to do that, but I don't think the council wants it, so they were trying to negotiate something else. I think he could push it and still put it right next to the other assisted living facility.
So the kind of way I look at, see this, maybe, maybe simplistic, they don't, Elk Ridge doesn't want it there, so they're going to try to annex a piece and where we're sitting and take care of a problem they have by taking some of the land that we've been in Payson set aside to annex.
They're trying to negotiate with us because we've asked them to allow some of our residents to go under their water.
One thing is we're looking at things, Dave, what I'd like to look at too is I think in Forbay, isn't there one of the agreements in Forbay about they have to approve anything that's done in Forbay? And I'd like to put that on that agenda too.
We can put that on the table. All this could be discussed with them. This is going to be a work session, so we, you know, if we have issues, make, make the list up and let's bring them up. So that would be something we could, see if we could pull out of that agreement as well. as well. So I'm not asking for a motion or anything, I just wanted to broach it with you guys, you can discuss it if you want, we will have that public hearing, or that joint work session, it's not a public hearing, but we'll work, we'll have Elk Ridge City Council down here, we'll come around the table, and we'll have some discussion on that, on the twenty-first of February.
So will that be a work session that starts at five, or only during our regular city council?
Well, the twenty-first is a Tuesday, I believe.
Oh, it's a Tuesday, okay, gotcha.
And so it's an off day, it's off of their council, and it's off of ours. No, I don't, let me just look for sure. Oh, it might be the twenty, because I thought it was a Tuesday.
I thought it was the twenty-first.
Because the twenty-first is a, is a council meeting, so I think it's on the twentieth, because they have their council meetings on the second, fourth Tuesday. We have ours on the first and third Wednesday, so that, that's an off night for vote on the twentieth. So I think that's the, I think I missed vote for the twenty-first, the twentieth is a Tuesday, and it would give us time, we could just meet in here and discuss, discuss all those issues you want to bring up, so...
I'm also preserving Forbay, and I've made that clear, but I think Brian's got a good, good point, I think that's something that should be brought to the table, that's a frustrating point, even though I don't want to see it.
And you know, Mr. Haskell has come a few times, he'd like to do some development up there, so...
The other concern I have is, is all the planning that went into that east side plan, like, we had residents from that area come out, is he even going to be able to build if he switches to Elk Ridge?
Yeah. Yeah, they're not, they're not bound by our east side plan, or they're not bound by this three hundred acre rule. And Travis brings up a good point, we really need to look at the utilities, because we currently, there's much of the property in the all red orchards and some of the other property that is in ag protection, so we would have a very difficult time annexing any of this property unless all red orchards agree to do that. So, you know, this, these properties could sit for years if they didn't want to build, so it's something we ought to discuss, and we're not, I don't want to hold hostage properties, if we, if we're never going to be able to develop this, we probably ought to work something out of Elk Ridge, so that the property owners could do something with their property.
I think this is great, good, we're getting together, and they're one of our neighbors, and we ought to, we ought to work, work with the neighbors and make things work out, so thanks for putting it together.
All right, if you have any comments now of the twentieth, let me know, we can, we can create an agenda, and we'll, we'll be ready to meet upon agreement.
Okay, I think we're to the point where we will ask for a motion for adjournment. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here and being interested in what's going on in the city. We have a motion to adjourn. So move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.